This time we'll call our January 16th meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Womack.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Here.
Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wheaton.
Councilman Walker.
Here.
Four present, one absent.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by Pastor Steve Taboo of the River Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States flag.
Heavenly Father, thanks for our awesome city. Thank you, Lord, for the blessing of Cookeville, Tennessee, and Putnam County, and, Lord, for being such a great place to raise our kids. And, Lord, I just want to come before you now and stand in the gap for our city officials and our state and our national. Lord, it's a crazy time in our nation, and just pray for our Senate and our House and our President, Vice President. Lord, just asking for wisdom. Lord, we're asking for wisdom in that situation, and, Lord, we pray for our city. Lord, so many decisions, week after week, that these guys and gals have to go through and consider, and so, Lord, we ask you for wisdom for our city leaders. We ask that you would continue to show your favor, Lord. Thanks for the jobs. Thanks for the hard work our leaders are giving, and, Lord, we just pray your blessings, that you continue to bless and that we can continue to have a place to raise our families, love people well, and be loved by you. Pray all this, thanking you, in Jesus's name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Item three, consider approval of agenda as presented. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion a second, any discussion? All vote?
Four yes, votes, motion carries.
For A, consider reappointment to the Cookeville Planning Commission, John Ward.
Mayor and council members, the term of Ms. Kay Starkweather for service on the Cookeville Municipal Planning Commission expires in January of 2020, and Ms. Starkweather is a council-appointed member of the Planning Commission. Council-appointed members serve five-year terms to the Planning Commission. Ms. Starkweather has, she has agreed that, she has indicated she would continue to serve if reappointed. She was appointed to the Planning Commission first in 2013. The planning department recommends for her, for the reappointment of Ms. Kay Starkweather.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion a second, any discussion? All vote?
Four yes, votes, motion carries.
Thank you. For B, consider reappointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals, John.
Mayor and council, the current terms of two members of the Board of Zoning Appeals expire January 2020 as well. These members are Mr. Sid Gilbreth and Mr. James Dial. Members of the Board of Zoning Appeals serve three-year terms and are appointed by the council. Mr. Gilbreth indicated that he would like to continue to serve if reappointed. Mr. Gilbreth was appointed to the BZA on February 11th, 1999, and currently serves as the chairman. The planning department recommends for the reappointment of Mr. Gilbreth.
Thank you.
Mr. Dial, do you want to do these together?
We can do them together.
Mr. Dial has also indicated that he would like to continue to serve if reappointed. Mr. Dial was appointed to the BZA on February 13th, 2014, and currently serves as the vice chairman. The planning department also recommends for the reappointment of Mr. Dial.
Any opposition doing these together?
No.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second, any discussion? All vote?
Four yes, votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Under Old Business, 5A, consider approval of minutes of council being held on December 19th, 2019. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second, any discussion? All vote?
Four yes, votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Under the consent agenda, 6A, set a date, 2020 for a public hearing on ordinance O-200102, closure of the alley located between 64 East First Street and 204 Cherry Avenue. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second, any discussion? All vote?
Four yes, votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Under New Business, 7A, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance O-191217 to close and abandon and declare as surplus property a portion of West 14th Street located west of Autumn Avenue. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Here's a general location of the property. It's been requested for closure and abandonment. Here's a location map showing the portion of West 14th Street. Here's an aerial view of the property. Mr. Donnie Elkins is requesting that the western terminus of West 14th Street, west of Autumn Avenue be closed. Here, we've got a survey submitted with a request. As depicted on the submitted survey, this segment of West 14th Street consists of approximately 50 linear feet of street with a right-of-way width of approximately 27 feet for a total of 1,306 square feet. The right-of-way is contiguous with property owned by Mr. Elkins on all sides, identified as parcel one on tax map 40J, Group A. The procedure for the closure and abandonment of streets and right-of-way is specified in Title 16, Chapter 4 of the Cookeville Municipal Code, and includes the following: submission of a written request and payment of a fee; submission of survey; confirmation that all affected property owners have been contacted and concur with the closure and abandonment; review of all applicable city departments; review and approval by the Planning Commission; and approval by city council; and purchase of the property based on a value established by the city manager. All applicable city departments have reviewed the closure and abandonment request. A sewer line is located within this segment of West 14th Street right-of-way. The Water Quality Control Department requests a 20-foot utility easement be provided for the existing sewer line. All other applicable departments have no comments related to the request. To note, Mr. Elkins has submitted a plat to the planning department for a proposed 41-unit townhouse development at 1209 North Willow Avenue. The site is located just north of the T-Mart, located on the corner of West 12th and North Willow Avenue. Site is currently being raised with fill material, and Mr. Elkins has purchased the home located at 162 West 14th Street and combined this with the existing property to incorporate within the proposed development. With the acquisition of the home at 162 West 14th Street, Mr. Elkins is the only property owner affected by the request, and analysis of the surrounding property values provides a value of $3.08 per square foot. This value is determined by the land market value as included in the real estate assessment data. The petitioner does have the option to provide a market appraisable of the property to establish the value if they choose. The request was approved by the Planning Commission as recommended by the planning department and subject to the retention of an easement at 20 feet in width on either side of the existing sewer line, and I recommend your approval.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the public hearing portion of the meeting. Do we have anyone that would like to speak about this matter? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second, any comments or questions? All vote?
Four yes, votes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7B, consider resolution R-200101 to accept and recommend Cookeville pedestrian and bicycle circulation plan update. Mr. Ward.
Mayor and council members, the city of Cookeville applied for and was awarded a community transportation planning grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation to update our 2003 pedestrian and bicycle circulation plan. The T-DOT Community Transportation Planning Grant Program is a program to assist rural communities with planning efforts that define the transportation cohesiveness between multimodal transportation systems and local land use objectives that achieve statewide transportation goals. The program aids with the creation of planning documents that support improvements in traffic flow, safety, and overall efficiency of the transportation system, and provides governments with planning resources to achieve community visions as related to transportation and land use needs that promote future economic growth. Gresham Smith was of the consulting firm selected to prepare the plan update, and work began on this last March in 2019. A citizens committee was formed to participate in plan development, and the city of Cookeville worked with Gresham Smith to facilitate a number of internal and public meetings to develop the plan update. For grant closeout purposes, T-DOT requires the Planning Commission and city council approve a resolution accepting the plan update. The planning department will utilize and incorporate the plan into the appropriate elements of the Cookeville 2030 Plan and forthcoming updates to the Cookeville 2030 Plan. The Planning Commission approved a resolution at its meeting on December 16th, 2019, and I recommend your approval of the resolution to accept the Cookeville Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan Update.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second, any discussion? All vote?
Four yes, votes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7C, consider on first reading ordinance O-200101, amending Title 19, Chapter 2 of the Cookeville Municipal Code, gas service. Mr. Mills.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman. The purpose of this ordinance deals with the rate structure of the gas department and the method of collecting a larger percentage of our fixed cost while reducing the rate charged for our customers gas consumed. The gas department's current rate structure captures a small portion of fixed operating costs with the majority of revenue dependent upon seasonal gas consumption. A few months ago, you allowed us to contract with Raftellis Consultants to do a rate study of our revenue recovery. Basically, we have costs involved with day-to-day operations which are not dependent on how much gas we sell. Samples of these fixed costs are infrastructure maintenance, salaries, equipment, demand charges from transmission pipelines, billing issues, et cetera. Our current fixed customer charges cover a small portion of those fixed costs. The purpose of this change is to restructure the current rate configuration by marginally increasing the fixed customer charge and lower the base rates to the customers for the gas they use. The intent is to lower the rates for gas consumed enough to balance the fixed charge increase, resulting in a net zero dollar impact for the customer. This will result in customer bills increasing in the summer months, and the costs they will be paying for gas in the winter months to be at a lower rate. The restructure will allow us to capture the same amount of revenue annually with less dependency and fluctuations connected with temperatures. Currently, we generate approximately 75% of our revenue from November through March. With uncontrollable winter temperatures, this revenue recovery change will provide added support for our fixed costs and reduce the winter bill cost for the customer. The way we came about how we needed to do this through the consultant is we devised an objective of what we wanted, and that was to improve the alignment of costs in the revenues and increase the stability of the gas revenues that we get, and we do that with a revenue-neutral change to have a non-effect on the customer. The steps to accomplish it was determine the revenue for a normal year, and we needed to increase the customer charges for all the classes that we cover, would decrease the volume charges to maintain neutral revenue by the class, and will adjust the block differentials to recover more revenue in the less of the weather-sensitive blocks. Now, what is this change going to look like? I see existing versus the rate design. Our customer charges are going up for all our rate holders. For instance, the, right now, we do a $5 residential customer charge monthly. That will go to $7. We do $6 commercial charge, customer charge, that will go to $15. The $20 industrial customer charge will go to $50. Our interruptible charge will go to $120. They currently have zero. We will lower the volume rates to compensate for these changes in the customer charges, and again, it's going to be a rate-neutral. No increases for revenue for our department, just a different way of capturing it. If approved, we're going to hope that it'll go into effect May 14th, 2020. A look at what it's going to do to our customer. Here's our residential. It's based on a six-unit summer usage and 110-unit winter. Right now, the summer usage, they're paying like $7.80 a month for that. In the winter, they're paying $55.67. The proposal goes through, they'll be paying $9.62 in the summer and $52.35 in the winter with a net increase of $1.82 in the summer months and $3.32 decrease in the winter months. And what's that going to do for the combined benefits for both of us? It's not a rate increase. The customer's annual cost is spread out throughout the year, lessening the burden of their winter bill spikes, and we'll be able to capture the revenue throughout the year in a more stable process, and I recommend your approval and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second, any discussion? So again, rate-neutral, that's the key to this.
Yes.
I guess in theory, someone depending on the, even if it was a more harsh winter, it's still going to equal out?
Of course, nothing's going to be equal to equal. I mean, you can't do it exact, but the harder winter we have or the colder weather we have, the more savings they should see.
Okay.
On a warmer winter, that year, they may actually pay $3 more a year or whatever it tallies out, but on a harder winter, it will just spread their cost out through the year and should be at a low, it'll be, they'll be buying it at a lower rate so they have a lower cost.
Okay. All right, so that's good.
What are the usage trends that we see as a city as a whole? Are we going, do we use more year to year, or have we been decreasing?
We're increasing slightly. There's not a great huge increase because although the city is really growing, so much of that is in townhomes and stuff, which we don't capture any of that energy use per se.
All right. Okay, any other comments? All vote?
Four yes, votes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7D, consider authorizing the city manager entering into an engineering contract for the water treatment plant expansion project. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, I'm seeking authorization for the city council to authorize the city manager to enter into a engineering contract with Consolidated Technologies to design the last phase of our water treatment plant expansion. The original plant was constructed in '71 and expanded in '82 and '83. The last phase of a plan, we started back in '96, so I'm going to take you through real quick how we got to where we're, how we got here. So Cookeville started water from Whitsin, I think.
How about that? I've never seen that picture.
Whitsin Spring, Town Spring. I found it named two different things, and I'm assuming this is the Whitsin Spring, and there is, they pumped water from that spring and some wells over to a big concrete basin that, there used to be a power supply there, and they generated some kind of power, and it went through a two-inch pipe up into the central part of town, and it outgrew that. And so, in '24, they contracted and went out to Anderson Spring, which is out at the old city lake, the spring up at the head, at the trailhead, if you know where that is. And so, they built there, they built that there at that point, and I think it was around a million gallons a day and so forth. Then in '46, the city built a dam, dammed-up city lake to sort of stabilize that supply of water for them. But then, in '68, the lake went dry, so Cookeville just about ran out of water. So at that point in time, the city had enough forethought, started looking around for a stable water supply for Cookeville in this region, and if it was going to grow, they had to have a stable water supply, so. And there was a couple of different streams looked at. Blackman's Fork was looked at to dam up, and it wasn't supplying enough water long-term, so the best thing they did, which was very smart, go to Center Hill Lake. So that's where we did, went to Center Hill Lake. So the plant moved from Center Hill down to, or down to Center Hill in about 1970, and it was a seven-and-a-half million gallon plant at that time. Then in '83, it was doubled in capacity up to 15 million gallon rated capacity, and there was one 30-inch water line coming to town at that point. So about 1996, we commissioned a report to sort of look at, how are we going to expand when we need to expand again? And so, one of the things we looked at and came up with was, hey, we need enough, we've got to get it to town, we've got to get it from the lake up to the plant. So, and at that point in time, we ended up running in '99 through 2003, ran another water line, a 30-inch water line from Center Hill, from the plant up to town, and built a 10-million gallon storage tank, and also ran a new 30-inch water line from the lake up to the plant to where future, we could put 30 million gallons through the arteries to get to town. About that time, we also did a lagoon project, which was the solid project that we needed to do. That was funded with, this one was borrowed money, we borrowed money to do that project. This project we did, we needed to increase the solids handling capacity, so we did that project with a cash flow that project in 2005. And then, so we were looking at trends, where are we going? What are we going to do? How quick do we need to start doing the last, rest of the phases of this long-range plan? So in '96, we commissioned another study. How are we going to increase the plant with the land we've got? Can we do it there? And so, in '96, we did that study, and so, we looked at, in 2007, did a project at the intake. Let's go ahead and do that phase first. Let's get the intake redone to where it has the capacity to pump 22.5 million gallons and then easily upgrade it to 30. So we did that project. We redid all the pumps there. We did all the, redid the electrical, and then, so we got through with that phase. So the next phase we jumped into was in 2012. Let's go to the plant. How are we going to get the water out of the plant to town? So that was a, about a $7 million project, and we cash flowed that project also, and that project basically just, we redid the laboratory, we redid the skate operation room, we redid the back T-lab, the office part, we replaced all the electrical, and we replaced all the pumps and got them to the capacity they need to be, and redid the office area. So that gets us to this, I call it the last phase, it's really just the next phase in Cookeville's water supply going forward, but this is the last, the next phase is now adding capacity. We can get it to the plant, we can get it to town, now we got to treat it and then get it out. So this is the last phase, and we've sort of been holding off on it just based on our water demand, so this will add seven-and-a-half million gallons a day capacity and bring the plant up to a rated capacity of 22.5 million gallons. We'll be adding some clarifiers, some flocculators, all the things that goes along with doing that. And so, this, the engineering contract I'm requesting approval tonight will perform, will perform the design services on this, on this last phase or the next phase, which will add that seven-and-a-half million gallon capacity, filters, chemical storage, flocculation basins, new clarifiers, we're going to expand the carbon feed system, and some other odds and ends that need to get done. CTI is the firm that has performed the design work on Phase 1 and 2 of our projects. Their fees are in line with fees we paid on our other projects in the past, and they're in line with similar projects of this scope that I've reviewed. Broken down the engineering fees in my memo, and I would recommend approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second, any questions?
Yes, sir.
This upgrade, like, what type of capacity increase, like, population-wise?
That was my question.
Will it, 30 million or 30 mega gallons or whatever?
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to run your question around in my head, how to answer.
Right.
How many people will that serve going forward?
Right.
We probably serve right now, we're pumping averaging 12 million gallons probably a day, somewhere in that ballpark, and we think we're serving about 100,000 population, give or take, from the whole area. You know, we serve five wholesale customers, and we go into, I don't know how many counties we go into, and so, when you add all those up, we think it's around 100,000 population that we're serving currently, at around 12, so whatever that works out to.
Yeah, I believe a lot of those factors involve like industrial use in the future and technology.
It will.
So it could, it could vary a lot.
You could have a million gallon a day industrial client come in if we decided to take somebody like that, you know?
But in theory, if it was all things being equal, it'd be about 180,000 people.
Yeah, probably going forward.
180, depending upon large customers, but certainly takes us into a good.
Well, it'll take us pretty good pace unless, I think we're going to, one of the reasons I wanted, I thought we need to go ahead and do it, because I think we're going to continue to grow, our, it's up, we're going up, our trends are up, and we think we have access to some real cheap money right now, and so, we think we need to take advantage of it and use it.
Very good. Any other comments?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I think it's a great time to invest in infrastructure like this during a growth period. I visited the water treatment plant today, and I know the other council members have already had a chance to visit, and it's, it's an amazing operation. We don't just take water and pump it to town. We really manufacture water, and I'm using a term Ronnie talked about today, but we are in the manufacturing business of water, and it provides water to everybody in the city, and it's, it's good, clean, healthy water, and I got some fresh off the pipe today, so it's also delicious, so it's good water right now. But I'm, I am excited to see that kind of growth happen in our town, so anything we can do to promote this moving forward would be great.
Any other comments? All vote? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to comment about Bobby Davis, who was mayor back in '68, and the council at that time had the vision to go to City Lake, I'm, to go to.
Center Hill.
Center Hill when City Lake dried up, so everything developed from that, and Cookeville's got water to spare now.
Yeah, I've talked to Bobby many times, and he's brought me some of the information I have from Bobby.
Very good. All right, all vote?
Thank you.
Four yes, votes, motion carries.
And now the exciting portion of the meeting, 7E, hold a public hearing on the annual progress report on the plan of services for the following annexation areas: Old Bridge Road, Fallingwater River, Buck Mountain Road, Dry Valley Road, East Highway 70 North, Interstate 40, West Cookeville Interstate 40, Shagrag Road, Rebecca Place, Bunker Hill Road, Bunker Hill Road, Love Lady Road, Free Hill Road, North Washington Avenue, South Willow Avenue, Bennett Road Extension, Old Stewart Road, Hall Bennett Road, and Mackey Farm Area. John Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Tennessee Code Annotated, Section 651108, requires municipalities to prepare and publish an annual report and hold a public hearing on the progress of implementing plans of services for annexation areas until the plans of services are fully implemented. The city of Cookeville currently has 22 areas, 22 annexed areas that would require annual reports. The plans of services have been fully implemented for nine of these areas. The locations of the 13 areas, which still require the public hearing, and some plans of services remain to be completed are depicted on the screen. A comprehensive annual report for those annexed areas was recently published in the Herald Citizen. We'll go through these individually. First, the sanitary sewer service is the only service remaining to be provided for the Old Bridge Road, Fallingwater River area. The plans, the plan of services specify that sanitary sewer will be provided based upon the same criteria, standards, and policies used to determine the expansion of sanitary sewer service in the unserved portions of the present corporate limits. A sewer line extension was completed in 2015 that provided sewer service to approximately 111 parcels in this area, and sewer service was extended to nine additional parcels in 2018. All services are provided in the Buck Mountain Road, Dry Valley Road area with the exception of sanitary sewer. The plans of service specify that sanitary sewer will be provided based upon the same criteria, standards, and policies used to determine the expansion of sanitary sewer service in the unserved portion of the present corporate limits. The East Highway 70 North, Interstate 40 area, all services have been provided with the exception of sanitary sewer. The plans of service, again, specify that sanitary sewer will be provided based upon the same criteria, standards, and policies used to determine expansions in the current unserved portions of the corporate limits. Two phases of sewer installation have been completed in this area, serving approximately 165 parcels. All services have been provided in the West Cookeville I-40 area with the exception of water service, sanitary sewer, street lighting, and electric service. The plan of services specifies that water service will be provided within five years after the city acquires the service area. The sanitary sewer will be provided based upon the same criteria, standards, and policies used to determine the expansion in unserved areas of the corporate limits. Street lighting and electric service will be provided within one year after the city acquires the service area. Currently, electric service and street lighting have been provided to approximately 95% of the area, and the I-40 fifth interchange project is now complete, including the street lighting. The installation of water and sewer service in the Highlands Business Park was completed in 2013. An agreement with Double Springs Utility District for acquisition of water service area is currently under evaluation by the Water Quality Control Department. South of I-40, all water customers have been acquired. So the Shagrag Road area, all services have been provided with the exception of sanitary sewer, and again, this is in the plan of services, this is to be provided based upon the same criteria, standards, and policies used to determine expansions into unserved areas of the current corporate limits. The Rebecca Place, Bunker Hill Road area, all services have been provided with the exception of sanitary sewer. In this annexation, the plan of services specify that sanitary sewer will be provided within 20 years after the effective date of annexation. Sewer has been provided to approximately two customers in this area. The Bunker Hill Road, Love Lady Road area, all services have been provided with the exception of sanitary sewer. Once again, the plan of services specify that sewer will be provided within 20 years of the effective date of annexation for this area. The Free Hill Road area, all services have been provided with the exception of sewer. The plan of services specify that sewer will be provided within 25 years of the effective date of that annexation. The South Willow Avenue area, all services have been provided with the exception of sanitary sewer. The plan of services for that area specify that sewer would be provided based upon the same criteria, standards, and policies used to determine expansion of sewer in the unserved areas of the current corporate limits. Sanitary sewer. Sanitary sewer has been provided to thirteen parcels in that, in that annexation area. The Bennett Road Extension service has been provided with the exception of water service and sanitary sewer. Water service rates for existing city customers have been reduced to the inside-the-city rate. An agreement with Double Springs Utility for acquisition of water service is under evaluation by the Water Quality Control Department. Sanitary sewer was specified to be provided at the same criteria, standards, and policies as extended into other unserved areas of the present corporate limits. A sanitary sewer line under I forty, which is required to provide service north of the interstate, was completed in two thousand sixteen. For the Old Stewart Road area, all services with the exception of sanitary sewers have been provided. Once again, that was included in the plan of services as to be provided based on the same criteria, standards, and policies used to determine the expansion of sewer service in the unserved portions of the corporate limits. As part of the I forty interchange project, a sewer line was installed along Tennessee Avenue, serving five parcels and eliminating a sewer pump station that served Academy Sports. The Hall Bennett Road area, all services with the exception of sanitary sewer are in place, and that was also included in that plan of services to be provided based on the same criteria and standards and policies used to determine expansion to other unserved portions of the corporate limits. And lastly, the Mackey Farm area, our most recent annexed area, all services have been provided, specified in the plan of service with the exception of water, service for fire protection, sanitary sewer service, and streetlights. The plan of service specify that improvements to provide fire hydrants necessary to provide fire protection to the area will be completed within five years after the effective date of annexation. The plan of service specify that sewer would be provided when economically feasible and based upon the same criteria, standards, and policies used to determine the expansion of sanitary sewer in the unserved portions of the corporate limits. And the Cookville Legislature Department is working with UCMC for the completion of installation of street lighting, which is expected within one year. And that concludes my report on the plans of services. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we need a motion to receive that, or just?
So moved. Yeah.
Yeah, motion, we have it second.
Second.
Motion, second, to receive the report. Any comments? All vote?
Mayor? We do have to hold a public hearing on that.
Apologize. Yes. Let's hold a public hearing.
Let's hold a public hearing on that.
Do we have anyone that would like to speak on this matter related to any of these projects? Yes, ma'am. Cancel that vote then. It's not a vote. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, hi. My name is Martina Gabriel, and I own, of course, quite a bit land on Highway Seventy East, and that's a great interstate exit. And we have quite a bit land that we would like to change. Right now, there is like eighteen acres that's, of course, in the green belt. Then there is another eight acres that's residential, and we would like to develop that land. But we are stuck because we don't have the city sewer. With Cookville growing as much as it does grow, we have quite a few requests that people would like to go and invest on the hill, especially since it is the best view of Cookville overlooking the Cumberland Mountains. So, of course, we cannot do anything until the city sewer. Is there any way you can give us a timeline when we can expect that? I know the gentleman that owns the Rock Quarry, I think you had been in contact with him, and I know he would provide something to, for the pump station if he would come that way. So I just need some sort of a timeline so we can plan on it.
Okay. Can we get her information? You get that information to her?
I'll get with Ronnie Kelly and see if we can get you a date, an approximate date for when that could happen. We did, this was discussed. Last year, I believe you came. Ronnie's looked at it. You know, it's going to be very difficult, based on the number of customers, to justify. I think we looked at coming down the interstate, but we'll look at it and get back.
Yeah, because it's not only my property, it's Baymont Inn, it's Mike's Market, and of course, the restaurant, the Fiesta Cancun, so, and then some private parcels.
I'll get with Water Quality Control Department and see if we can come up with an approximate.
Estimate or something.
Estimate.
Can we, can we try to assure her we'll have her an answer or at least a knowledge in the next two weeks? Can we get her at least some information in the next two to four weeks?
Ronnie?
I'm not saying a definitive decision, I'm saying just get her some information so she has a, yeah.
I've met with her.
Okay.
Talked with her, but yes, we can.
Okay.
See, we don't want that it happens like it did with the gas when you came in, because we remodeled the restaurant, we were done, we were ready to open, and all of a sudden the gas line was there. So we had to convert everything, all the equipment, to natural gas, so we want to make sure we can get a plan.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have anyone else that would like to speak on any of the areas that were mentioned in the report? Anyone else? Okay. We'll now close the public hearing portion, and we'll take a motion to receive the report.
So moved.
Motion, motion a second, to receive the report. Any comments or questions? All vote?
For yes, both, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our agenda portion of the meeting. We have time at the end for any citizens that would like to address the council on non-agenda items. Do we have anyone that would like to address the council on anything? All right. Council, anyone have anything? No? Okay, we're adjourned.